Good evening. It is now 6:30 p.m. on Monday, June 21st, 2021, and I now call the Wynton Woods City School District Board of Education meeting to order. And first, I want to welcome Mr. Denny, who will be sitting in for Mr. Smith, our superintendent. And so we'll get right into it, to our first agenda item, which is 1.01, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will all stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Here.
Dr. Johnson? Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Present.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Present. The next item on the agenda is 2.0, which is a recess, but given that we do not have any guests, that we would usually do our recognition, there's no need to take a recess unless the board feels that they're tired and they needed recess already. So we will skip that and we'll move right to 3.01, which is the public comments. And we do not have any public comments right now, so we can roll right into 4.01. Do we have anybody online or whatever from the Teachers Association? Okay. We'll move on to 4.02, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, OPSI. Doesn't look like we have a representative for OPSI as well. So let's move on to 5.01, which is the approval of the minutes. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda will be the Treasurers' Report. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. For the month of May, our year-to-date revenues in the general fund were $49.1 million, of which, on a current month, for the month of May, we received $3.2 million, which was from the state foundation and our homestead and rollback. Our expenditures in the general fund are currently at $47.4 million through the month of May, and we are currently running approximately 7.3% under the board's adopted budget, or about $4.1 million. The unencumbered balance of all funds for the year is at $36.2 million, of which of the major funds, $18.4 million was in the general fund and $9.9 million in classroom facilities. And that's basically a summary of the activity for the month of May.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, are there any questions for the financial statements for May 2021? With no objections being heard, let the financial statements for the month of May 2021 be submitted for audit. So we'll move on to 7.01, which is the investment reports for May 2021. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor again.
Yes, we had approximately $36.4 million invested, of which is all in regular bank accounts at this point. As you know, our portfolio has been drawn down in order to meet the demands of the building fund. So the interest for the month was only at $8,953. Most of that was for the general fund of $7,892 and the building fund, $1,061, a long ways from when we first started, isn't it? But you can tell we've paid down or and/or are ready to begin paying off the buildings. That's the investment report for the month of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, 7.02, Final Appropriations Resolutions for Fiscal Year 2021. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, before you, you have the final appropriations resolution. The appropriations did not change for the year for any funds that have tax collections applied to them. However, at the end of each year, we need to make some moderate adjustments for our state and federal grants. As you know, they come in at a different fiscal year than the tax, the funds that tax dollars come into. And also, as you know, we received some additional funding this year from the federal government for different expenditures related to COVID. So those have been incorporated into the final appropriations. So before you, you have the final appropriation as best estimated until we close in the month of June for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the final appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. Back to you, Mr. Seymour, for 7.03.
Now, I'm asking you to adopt a temporary appropriations resolution for the upcoming school year of 2021-22. I have to have permission from the board with temporary appropriations in order to meet obligations of the district until you adopt the final appropriations in either the August or September meeting, depending upon what comes at us with the new state funding or any additional issues with federal funding. But the final appropriations are due to be approved by the board no later than October the 1st, along with your five-year forecast. So these are just temporary measures to give me permission to pay the obligations of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion for final appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2021 approval.
Say that again?
Did I get the wrong? Was it 7.02?
Nope, 03.
03, I'm sorry. I'll make a resolution for temporary appropriations resolution for fiscal year 2022 approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? I would just like to say, you know, it's so good to have those work sessions incorporated to give you that opportunity to kind of take us through because, you know, it's sometimes when we're looking at the appropriations and things like that, I think you just make it very clear-cut to us. So thank you for presenting this information prior.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously, and we'll move on to 7.04. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Here you have a resolution determining to proceed with the submission of an additional tax levy. As you recall, at the last board meeting, you submitted the resolution of necessity, which goes to the county auditor. And we were very fortunate to have the county auditor turn this around very quickly, in a matter of three days, so that we could get it back to the board for, so that we could get it moving on our next campaign. As you know, the board chose not to go continuing this time. They chose to go for five years for $3 million, and the auditor determined that to be 5.56 mils. And you were asking for 6.95 to generate 3.2 million. And the reason for the decreased mileage is due to our reevaluation. And I think the board decided that five years was a good window in order to see what happens with state funding, to see where we're at with the continuation. Will Cup Patterson be funded? As it appears right now, it does not look like it will be, but it still has to go to committee. But the Senate has more or less sent it back. So we're not sure where we are with state funding at this time. So five years from now, if we get the funds from the state, you can let the levy go away because it would be replaced by state dollars, or you may determine that the state didn't come through, as those who have been around for a long time know, every two years it changes, and every two years you either lose or get capped, or it pretty much stays flat. But we're hopeful that a lot of people put a lot of work in on the new funding formula, so we'll see what happens. But we were hoping to have more information before you would finalize this levy, and we don't. So I think that was the board's decision to make it for a limited amount of time and for a certain amount of dollars. And if Cup Patterson went through, as it was intended, Cup Patterson would make up this difference within, I think, four to five years, based on the suggested phase-in. But we don't know if that suggested phase-in would even come to materiality.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to point that out. And also, it also decreases the average cost to, for a $100,000 home, by $50 a year, about $48.65, or $50. I don't know if you have any other questions or not, but I want to make sure that it was a different type of levy. It's limited, it's five years, and it's for a fixed dollar amount, which equates to 5.56 mils.
Were you going to read the resolution?
I wasn't going to read the long resolution, but I thought maybe...
You covered a lot of what's in it, but...
I just thought maybe that you could state what, pretty much what I did, a resolution to proceed with the submission of a tax levy on an emergency basis for five years for $3 million, equating to 5.56 mils.
And that's fine. I just thought we were... It is, but I thought we had talked about reading it.
That kind of summarizes it.
But, okay, you summarized it prior to that, but I didn't know if that was just procedural, so... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed with submission of an additional tax levy as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I wonder if we want to state for the record the estimated cost per $100,000, which is in the next document? Or do we know enough by saying it will be less than the last?
Mr. Seymour?
We really need to wait for the auditor to certify that. I'm just giving you an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
He has certified the mileage, and then he'll send back, after you submit this resolution, he'll determine the cost.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it's a pretty good estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cupoletti and Mr. Seymour. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The next items on the agenda, 8.01 through 02, are informational reports of the superintendent, i.e., Mr. Denny. And there will be no action taken by vote. However, I'll be giving you a moment to ask questions should you have anything to say. So, Mr. Denny, you have the floor.
Thanks, Ms. Ruggles, and good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Pleasure to be with you this evening, representing Mr. Smith, and he was unable to be here this evening. But 8.01, Reports of the Superintendent, the first item is certification of standards governing types of foods and beverages sold on school premises. As the board's familiar, this is an annual requirement through Child Nutrition and State ODE, and we are in full compliance. And so this is basically just a certification by the board, its report. And just to sum that up, you should have before you a memo that's from the Business Office and the Child Nutrition Director, Mr. Doctor. And I'll just read briefly from it, just a couple excerpts. But it's required by Ohio Revised Code 3313.814 pursuant to Wynton Woods City Schools' Board of Ed Policy 8500 and 8510. And it basically states that all Ohio public schools must meet certain nutritional standards on all food that is sold on premises during the school day. And this affects the Child Nutrition Department as well as all vending on school premises and at any school stores. And once again, we're pleased to report that the Child Nutrition Department has continued to meet these guidelines and requirements this school year. Further, per board policy, all of the à la carte food items sold in the lunchrooms meet or exceed the guidelines established by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation, and all beverages meet the Ohio requirements and guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, are there any questions regarding this update? I would just like to say that having Mr. Mark Doctor and his team onboard definitely have seen some really great meals coming out of that area, so I'm really focusing on childhood nutrition, plus, you know, with the addition of Nutrition is the Mission, and just really making that a part of who we are, that nutrition is our mission, because I remember some of those school lunches.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just, kudos to Dr. Mark, Mark Doctor and the team. So back to you for 8.02.
Thank you. They really do a tremendous job.
Yeah.
Appreciate those kind words. I'll make sure I pass those along. 8.02 is school reports, and as the board's aware, it is summer. We have summer school going on, but no other school reports to offer. And so Mr. Smith and I talked about this briefly, and I'd like to just quote a couple things from the message he sent out, it's a letter that went, it was an all-district communication that went out June 10th. So I'll just read a few excerpts from that to summarize some of the highlights and high points of summer school to date. We're about to enter our third week of summer school. But when this was written, basically, Mr. Smith noted, "We have successfully completed our first full week of our 100% in-person summer academic program. It's an innovative in-person summer session, including an array of academic, cultural, gifted education, and fun experiences." So it's a very robust program this year, and I think we have about 300 youngsters that are with us daily. While there will certainly be traditional credit recovery intervention classes that will help to promote academic supports, I thought you would like to know that we are also committed to developing the whole child. During this time, developing the whole child is at the forefront of our mission. It's always a priority, but certainly right now, in the wake of COVID, it's even more critical. But this is one of the reasons why we're providing so many robust, enriching, and challenging courses. Beginning in August, however, it's important to note, as we start the 21-22 school year, that Wynton Woods will not offer virtual academic setting, that we will be 100% face-to-face instruction 100% of the time. And we'll provide additional support to students who may have struggled during the virtual experience. So again, that hearkens back to summer school, that's what summer school is really about. It's helping to build those experiences for kids who may have struggled. But Mr. Smith wanted to be sure that I stressed the fact that we are going to be 100% face-to-face come August 23rd and the start of our school year.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. One of the things that I love about the summer school process that we have right now, it is intervention, but it is also enrichment for students. And I certainly think that these buildings do provide an opportunity to do some enrichment along with intervention. But also, having those updates on COVID by the COVID team, and that once the staff was, had their immunizations, and that increased that, how those numbers went down tremendously. So it makes sense for us to be in person come the fall. So we're looking forward to seeing a robust hallways and everything with all of the students. Okay, so that was, anything else you want to add under the reports?
I think that sums it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So the next items on the agenda, there's actually eight, 9.01 through 9.08, and these are recommendations by the superintendent, i.e., Mr., coming through, Mr. Denny. And so this will be approved by vote, so a motion and a second will be necessary. So we'll go right on to 9.01, Personnel Schedules.
Thank you again, Ms. Ruggles. So these are recommendations from Superintendent Smith, and starting with 9.01 would be Personnel Schedules. And one of the things I would like to stress is, it's just a very interesting time in the education marketplace, certainly in other marketplaces, we're all seeing strange supply chains, and just the economy's really trying to get back on its feet, and, you know, people headed back to work, and it's just a transitional time. Education is no exception. We're seeing lots and lots of transitions, and that's not just a Wynton Woods phenomenon or dynamic, it's going on in many, many districts. So you'll see that there's a lot of movement on the personnel schedule, and there always is this time of year, but it's a little different this time. And then Mr. Smith wanted me to make sure I mentioned that there's a lot of transition going on in a lot of different sectors of the economy, including education and including different districts. So you'll see 9.01, all the various personnel schedules, and you'll find Schedule A, B, C, D, E, M, and N, and they are presented to you. You should have those before you, and the recommended action is to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented. I'll second it.
Thank you, gentlemen. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. 9.02, Mr. Denny?
Thank you, Ms. Ruggles. 9.02 is exempt employees' step placement for the 21-22 school year, and you should have that before you. And the recommendation at this point from Mr. Smith would be to approve the step placement for exempt employees on salary schedule for exempt employees as presented.
Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the step placement for exempt employees on salary schedule for exempt employees as presented.
Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the step placement for exempt employees on salary schedule for exempt employees as presented.
I'll second.
Second? Okay. Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is 9.03, Exempt Salary Schedule. Mr. Denny, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruggles. 9.03, Exempt Salary Schedule. Board, you should have before you the exempt salary schedule, and the recommended action would be to approve the salary schedule for exempt employees, which would be effective July 1, 2021, as presented, and as recommended by Superintendent Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the exempt salary schedule as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Next item is 9.04. Back to you, Mr. Denny.
Thanks again, Ms. Ruggles. 9.04, Board, you should have before you the administrative salaries effective August 1, 2021, and those are shown for all affected administrative personnel. And the recommendation or recommended action would be to approve the administrative salaries effective August 1, 2021, as presented and as recommended by Superintendent Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative salaries effective August 1, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.05. Mr. Denny, back to you.
Thanks again, Ms. Ruggles. So 9.05 is the Scarlet and Gray Cleaning Services Agreement, which is recommended as, to be renewed. You should have attached in your files the copy of that agreement and the various exhibits that are involved. And I would just like to point out that we have had to look long and hard at how to clean these buildings, because they are very different than traditional schools, they're also brand-new. So we've spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings, Mr. Smith, various administrators, the cleaning company, our support personnel, really developing a good cleaning program to keep them looking nice for years to come. So the recommendation would be to approve the Scarlet and Gray Services Agreement as presented. I'd also like to add that, just as a brief illustrative point, we've added two finishers or cleaning detail personnel to really kind of give it an extra shine, so just to make sure that it looks as new and as good as possible for as long as possible. So again, the recommendation would be to approve the Scarlet and Gray Cleaning Services Agreement as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Scarlet and Gray Services Agreement as presented. I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Actually, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I like the way that the building is designed, but do you find, what specifically do you find is, besides tar, having to clean that up, what specifically do you find that needs a little extra care?
Yeah, great question. Great question. So on the plus side, the concrete flooring lends itself toward ease of maintenance, but what we do have is a lot more glass, which again, was extremely valued by the design teams. And so that's, there's daylighting, it increases productivity, the kids said they wanted it, gives you a nice feeling like you're indoors when you're outdoors, but the cleaning of that glass takes a lot more manpower and woman power. We also have gym floor surfaces that are much larger than any other building we've ever had in the district, and that requires a lot of maintenance to keep those looking right. In addition to that, because we have distributed dining, we want to be sure that we, you know, from a health hygiene standpoint, but also just from a general appearance standpoint, we want to really stay on top of that. And so we've got a lot of surfaces to clean that we didn't really have to clean in the same way before. The other thing about this building is, almost every square foot is actually cleanable. In our older buildings, you had a lot more storage areas, and this building, almost everything is geared toward instruction. Every square foot you could grab, you grabbed it to try to teach kids and help kids be successful and help them grow. And so there's just a lot more cleanable space. So those, those kinds of changes really caused us to have to reimagine how we maintain the facilities.
I was just really wondering about distributed dining, and does that take a little extra?
It really does.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is 9.06, the Construction Alternates. Mr. Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Ruggles, and I'm excited about these. These have been a long time coming. These are some of the alternates that we were waiting on to see as we got toward the end of the project, if we had the available funds to actually purchase them. And the good news is that we do. So we've had a great team effort from our district and our construction and design companies to really get to this point. So we are now able to look at, and I'll just point not only to the attachment you have, but also on the screen, this might make it a little bit easier to reference. Mr. Smith asked me to do a brief presentation on this, so I just thought I'd hearken to the attachment that's called the Details, Construction Alternate Detail. So the first detail, we'll start with the north campus, the campus we're currently at. Both of these alternates are, it was necessary to have the old building and some of the parking lot cleared in order to be able to implement and build these alternates. So this is alternate 17, there are four alternates in total, alternate 17. And you have these again in your list, as well as the change orders themselves and this this detailed document, sort of just showing you the scope. But alternate 17 is parking lot improvements, what we refer to as the student lot, it's in front of the stadium, where you see the emergency gates for the stadium off of Central Drive. It's an additional, I think it's about 50-some parking stalls that will help serve our students who drive to school, as well as additional staff members and people who might even be using the stadium, because that's a community asset. So you can see the cost there noted, about $160,000. Alternate 31A is also exciting. It is not only the main entry sidewalks, adding additional sidewalks to the main entries, but an amphitheater that will seat up to approximately 100 students, according to the design firm, or 100 guests. So you could see outdoor concerts done right in front of the school, the marching band processing from the building to the stadium on a football night, and, you know, the crowd being able to gather there and cheer them on. So just a lot of nice upgrades for what I think will really help this feel like a campus, like a secondary, like, not a secondary, but a collegiate, post-secondary type experience. So you see the cost there is noted at approximately $138,000. And it's also shown on the screen. The green is base, if you will, and the pink is what's added. There's also some area for bike rack, so for active transportation, students and staff who'd like to bike to school, that's also featured as well, which is another value our community certainly has. South campus, moving on to that, we have two alternates at the south campus. The first is shown there, and it's a little out of order here, but that is the courtyard amphitheater on the screen, and you can see the additional scope highlighted in orange. And that is essentially, you probably have noticed that that's a two-way stage. That stage door can roll up, and you can do outdoor performances, or you can leave it shut and do indoor performances in the open gymnasium. But this gives a seating venue for outdoor, so for learning activities, for teachers conducting lessons, but also for concerts and sorts of extracurricular or co-curricular activities as well. So I think it'll be a wonderful addition, and that cost is shown there at about $132,000. And finally, the emergency access, alternate 26, alternate, excuse me, emergency access to Conca Drive, that actually exits the rear of the property, and it's shown at the very bottom of the screen there, as that, yeah, small leg of asphalt that comes down from the bus lot, and it goes down the hill to Conca Drive. That actually exits into Springfield Township. So the front of the school is Green Hills, and the back of the school is the township. But we did not want, as the design team and as the district, the folks responsible for this site, especially site safety, to have a bottleneck-type environment. Always want to be sure that if the main drive were blocked somehow, that you had egress to and from the campus from another direction. So that's why this is such an important alternate. And all of these alternates, by the way, just to note, are not paid from general fund. These are, these are from the bond, or from project interests, or from money that the contractors are giving back to the district because they didn't need it along the way, or also from contingency funds that we still have as the district, as the owner. So these are all paid for a variety of funds that are not permanent improvement, and they're not general funds, so we keep those funds intact for other purposes for operating the district. But that does conclude the presentation of the alternates. Happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Let's get a motion on the floor first, and then we can talk about any questions. So, board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the construction alternates as were just presented.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Now, are there any questions or discussion about the alternates? I'd just say that, you know, there were, I went to a lot of planning meetings, but not even close to the number of planning meetings that district staff had gone to and, and looking at, you know, it's like, we're going to build the Lexus, we're going to build, you know, the Cadillac, and, you know, sometimes people will, I take that back, let me say it, sometimes will, some people will build the Cadillac or the Lexus, and they end up with a Pinto, or a Chevy Chevette. Nothing against Chevy Chevettes, I had a Chevy Chevette. But it's good to see that, you know, there was an intersection with the students, with the staff, with the community, to see what they want, wanted, but along the way saying, okay, we're going to hold off on these things, and we'll see if we're able to bring them back. So kudos to the team for being good stewards of the bond money, but also making sure that the community was very clear that this was not coming out of general fund, it was coming out of the bond specifically. So I'm glad to see some of these things happening and some things coming back, you know, so, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
CNN, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Denny, for 9.07.
Thanks again, Ms. Rugliss. So 9.07 is the SHP Agreement for the Early Childhood Village Design Services for HVAC and Building Envelope. So I'll give a little detail on that. SHP is, of course, the design firm responsible for our district's master plan, and so they are in a position now, and the district's in a position, and we're very fortunate with the addition of the SIR funds. They've really made this extremely accessible right now, because this is allowable usage for SIR dollars, is to improve your building envelope. That's your windows, your window frames, your doors, your door frames, even certain roof components are eligible for SIR funding, round two, and even round three. So we're pleased to be able to present this to the board for your consideration. Because it exceeds $50,000, it does require, $50,000, excuse me, in aggregate value, it does require board authorization, but you can see the amount of the design services, and it's specifically for this segment of the renovations. It's, there's a lot more work, of course, that we would like to look at, but this central air, essentially ducted HVAC, RTUs, rooftop units, enhanced filtration for health, and then keeping all that great, cool, chilled air in the building with better building envelope technology, windows, window frames, doors, door frames, is really what this design services agreement is for. And so we would like to request your consideration and hopefully approval of the agreement so that those services could commence.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the SHP Early Childhood Village Design Services for HVAC and Building Envelope as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I have a question about the contract. This is just for design, it doesn't include a new HVAC, for example, right? And the funds for that will come out of?
The same, Dr. Kupuletti. Yeah, great question, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that specifically. Yeah, this is just the design services. They will develop all the specifications, do all the design work, incorporate the engineering.
Okay, and then for the equipment, where will that money come from?
Also SIR 2, round 2 and 3, elementary and secondary schools, emergency relief funds, I should, we use so many acronyms, I'm sorry.
Did you forget the E?
I do sometimes, but I think I got it this time. I don't know, I'll have to check.
Thank you very much.
We'll have to watch the tape. Yeah, thanks for the question, Dr. Kupuletti.
But I will say, you know, in our current context of COVID and this new variant, it's good that these SIR funds are coming to help with our HVAC system, and not to mention, we have state of the art building here. I would have been more concerned with the other buildings, but knowing that we have the filtration systems and things that's in place makes me feel good about how our students and staff, you know, their safety during these times. So I'm glad that there will be an upgrade to the HVAC system in the other buildings, so. So, I can't remember, did we get a motion? Yes, we did. Okay, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Sure.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. And for the last one, 9.08, Mr. Denny, back to you.
Yeah, thanks again, Ms. Rugliss. 9.08 is regarding an easement for Duke Utilities. Duke Energy, this easement would be for an underground circuit to enhance the grid, the electrical grid, and the connection that, basically between a grid called Fairfield 41 and the grid that serves the Forest Park, Green Hills, Springdale area. And so Duke has actually approached the district with this request, but all easements, of course, must be approved by the board, that's board policy as well as Ohio Revised Code. So the easement would be to basically create a new connector, and so if we could, I'll just put it on screen, again, just for ease of reference, and you have this in your attachments. But just for ease of reference, at the lower left-hand corner, you'll see some yellow highlighting. That is very close to, again, that emergency stadium gate, so this work will align nicely with some of the improvements in our parking lots, alternate 17 that we just talked about for the north campus. But essentially what Duke is proposing is creating a connector between the Fairfield 41 grid, which is on the Kemper roadside, and the other section of the grid, which is on the Waycross Road end of things. And so there's only a couple connectors they could possibly choose, and one of them is Central Drive. And so it will run on city property for a certain distance, and so that's between the city and Duke, but as far as our district would be concerned, and what we're requesting the board's consideration for, is basically allowing Duke to have, I believe it's a 20-foot easement along the, and it's for an underground conduit, so it won't be unsightly overhead lines in front of our stadium, which is a nice facility, obviously, we want to keep that looking as great as we can. But an underground conduit that runs from the pole that you see, it's out there now, it's near where the old entry to the high school parking lot was, and it runs, it'll go underground right there and then run along between Central Drive and the retention basin, the detention pond there, all the way down to Waycross, where it'll intersect underground there at Waycross. The benefit for the community is certainly obvious, this is going to basically create a massive breaker, if you will, so that if a tree line hits, if a tree hits a power line, this breaker can kick over and it can pull power from Fairfield 41 to Forest Park, or vice versa. So it's able to keep the grid up much more easily. We should have less brownouts, we should have less blackouts, according to Duke, and it just requires, again, the board wouldn't be giving them properties, just allowing them to use the property so that they can maintain the electric lines over time, and it does fall on district property as it runs on the stadium side of Central Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the Duke easement for underground circuit grid enhancement connections as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion or comments? CNN, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan's?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye. The board, the board, the vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is the legislative report, and I'd like the board to be aware of the following topics. Basically, House Bill 110, the school funding plan, is still going through the process as we, as Mr. Seymour talked about, with the Patterson, and just, you know, it's like a ping-pong when it comes down to talking about school funding, we just never know what's happening. So they're going through the process of holding hearings, and I've reported on this for the past three to four meetings, and unless something changes, I guess I or the superintendent or the treasurer will give us updates as things progress. The other item is Senate, the Senate passed Senate Bill 166 by a vote of 33 to 0, and this bill would establish student pathways for Career Success Grant Program, and require the state to create programs that establish financial incentives for Ohio businesses to provide work-based learning experience for students enrolled in career technical education programs, which is very important. You know, I come from working at Cincinnati State when there was always an opportunities for students to do co-op and get that experience, so this is another opportunity for our students to have a pathway to career success. And then the House Health Committee held its fourth hearing on House Bill 248, which would prohibit the mandatory vaccination and vaccination status disclosure. It prohibits discrimination based on a person's refusal of a vaccination or a refusal to show proof of a vaccination status. And then the last one is this, from the Senate Transportation Committee, this is near and dear to my heart, I just, I want kids to be safe, you know, especially, you know, with passing and speeding past school buses, so the committee held a sponsored testimony on Senate Bill 154, which would establish requirements for signs equipped with flashing lights and other lights and no lights that indicates speed limits in school zones. So, and that's all that I had for the legislative reports, so we can move on to 10.02, and I know Mr. Birdy has sent something out to board members, but you have the floor, Mr. Birdy, for 10.02.
I did send everyone on the board, Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour and Jeanette, to copies of documents from the last Great Oaks Board meeting, which include some board highlights, Mr. Snyder's report, a report from the CFO, Ben Van Horn, as well. We did have five students that were recognized on their Spotlight on Students report, Adia Johnson, Carlos Orso, Sabian Smith, all received the Scarlet Oaks Weekly Citizenship Award, Jada Caldwell received a Rotary Club of Northeast Cincinnati grant, and we had Gustavo Goristieto, and I'll apologize if I messed that up, but Gustavo was also the master of ceremonies for the Scarlet Oaks Senior Recognition Award Ceremony, so he did a great job doing that, and he also received a Rotary Club of Northeast Cincinnati grant as well, so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, are there any questions for Mr. Birdy? Okay. Get restarted.
I've been called worse.
Did I call you the wrong name? Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. 11.01 is our next items, which is Board of Education's motions and recommendations. Do we have any? Seeing as we don't have any, then we'll move on to 12.02, which are comments from the members of the Boards of Education, Mr. Smith slash Mr. Denny, and our treasurer. So we'll start with you, Mr. Seymour, you always have a lot to say.
I just want to say thank you for putting the levy back on the ballot and changing the purpose of it, and hopefully we can be successful this time, just by trying to be honest with our community.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Dr. Kupuletti?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say we're always honest with our community. No, I'm very pleased to hear that we're moving forward in a much safer environment for in-person learning in the future, and that took a great deal of effort by everyone in the district, and I think it will be well-received by the students and the parents, and so I'm very excited by that.
Thank you, Dr. Kupuletti. Mr. Birdy?
Just, everybody have a safe and productive summer. Mr. Denny, thank you for everything you did to help get these buildings up to where they are, and I'm sure it was painful few years, but it's a good thing it's probably not going on right now, that we're trying to do this with everything going on with supplies and supply chain issues, but, you know, thank you to the teachers and staff, and everybody have a safe summer and enjoy yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Can't get it right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. McGowan?
No, I, thank you to the staff, to the students, everybody. As you know, I had a little dental surgery, so I don't have much to say, so thank you, guys, and record the next meeting.
Thank you for coming and joining us, knowing that you had surgery, we really do appreciate it. And I just have one comment, I'm just amazed that you don't have more gray hair. I'm just, I mean, I have a little stress and they pop up everywhere, so, thank you. Mr. Denny, do you have anything you would like to add?
Just want to point out, I don't know if you noticed coming in, the building's actually coming down, and it's very bittersweet.
Yeah.
You know, so many great memories from so many people there, but also, this is progress, you know, we need the space and the room, and so just, again, want to thank the community for everything they did and all their support to get us to this point, as well as the board, as well as our staff. We wouldn't be here without, you know, a pretty tremendous team effort, so, just thanks, and wishing everybody a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. And you're right, there's a lot of memories that happen within these buildings, and I noticed on social media how much some of the alumni and I noticed on social media how much some of the alumni are talking about, oh, are they still having tours? Can I get in? And so I'm like, wow, you know, people are really, I know that, I mean, but a while ago. But it's just like, now that the buildings are coming down, it's time to make new memories. And, you know, welcoming the alumni to be a part of this process and a new memory, since they were so excited about the connection that they had in the other buildings. We have new ones that they can come and help support. I don't have too much to say. I think I said enough tonight, so I'm going to have us move on to 13.0, oh, let me say this. I just want to tell Dr. Johnson, we miss her, and we can't wait for her to come back. She's recovering from knee surgery. So the next item on the agenda is 13.01, which is move into executive session. And Board, there is not a need for an executive session, so we can move on to 14.01, which is adjournment. So with that said, I want to say thank you to our Waycross media partners. Thank you for Mrs. Denny and Mrs. Hobbs for being here with us and sticking it out with us. And with that said, I will close the Winton Wood City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting on June 21, 2021, adjourned. Thank you.